Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 2, 2016. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to come together as commissioners to address the needs of our citizens, give us the wisdom and knowledge to make the best decisions for our county's future. We lift up the family of Austin Swanger and ask that you surround them with peace in their time of song. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, first item of business is a call to public hearing. Recognize Ira Dove.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and members of the public. It's my privilege to present to you and the citizens of Haywood County the recommended budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. I would request that a public hearing be held on May 16, 2016, in the courtroom here at 5:30 for that budget. A couple of highlights out of that in the public budget should be available online by the end of the day and available to you all in the full packet. But just so that the public knows, we're not requesting any tax increase off of the present rate. That the goals that you had set in terms of increased funding for the schools and the community college have been met. That in addition, some of the other goals that have been met include the increased funding for the information technology infrastructure and for increasing the maintenance on the public buildings and a strong review of public safety areas.
All right then, if there's no objection, we'll schedule a public hearing for May 16, 2016 at 5:30 PM in this room. So if you could make that notation. Okay, we'll continue with administrative and agency reports. We have Stoney Blevins with us, Haywood County Health and Human Services Director and Assistant County Manager. Welcome, Stoney.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and members of the public. Wanted to brief you a little bit on the Medicaid reform legislation. You may have been hearing about this often over the last six months, and just wanted to kind of update everybody about where we are and what it is, what it isn't, and where it's going. So to start with, if we look at what Medicaid is, we need to remember that it is basically an insurance program. It's not a whole lot different than any insurance you can purchase or that's employee-covered. One thing to remember that it isn't is it isn't Medicare. We get this a lot, and at the Health and Human Services Agency, they sound a little bit similar. Medicaid is a little different than Medicare, even though both are certainly government-sponsored insurance programs. What Medicaid does is it serves low-income parents, children, seniors, and people with disabilities. Medicare would serve the last two categories in that bullet, but it's all attached to the Social Security Administration and not to local administration. In North Carolina, we have about 1.9 million citizens who are receiving Medicaid assistance as their insurance program, which is about 20% of the entire state population. So you can imagine it's arguably the largest insurance program in the state. Oh, this turned red, so I guess I'm finished now.
Yeah, I tell you, you don't.
Okay. We have over 14,000 Haywood County citizens that utilize Medicaid as their health insurance program, which is roughly 23% of our population. We do need to realize that Medicaid does not serve all low-income citizens. It does not serve single adults. It does not serve married couples with children. Want to talk about who pays for it. Each state runs its own Medicaid program in cooperation with the federal government, and federal participation varies from state to state. Some states, 100% of their Medicaid program is covered by federal dollars. In North Carolina, 66%, or two-thirds, of the Medicaid reimbursements are covered by the federal government. The only difference in that would be local administration. So in Haywood County, our staff who administer the Medicaid program, you might think I'm sort of as the local insurance agents, we receive 75% federal funding for their salaries, and then the county pays for 25%.
Stoney, why would some states get 100% reimbursement?
Sir?
Why do some states get 100% and we get less?
These are states who expanded their Medicaid program to cover all their citizens.
More services? It covers more services? Is that more eligibility?
Covers more people.
More people?
It may cover a little less services, too, because each state has the authority to develop their own Medicaid plan. So it's a federal program, but it's state-administered. So North Carolina's plan is actually pretty broad. We cover some things that other states don't, like long-term care for disabled adults. It's an optional service.
Okay.
If we look at Medicaid reform, this is session law 2015-245, which was just passed in September of last year, and this is the legislation that defines the Medicaid reform efforts in North Carolina. The key distinctives of this bill are budget predictability. So really, the primary reason for this bill was that the Medicaid costs were soaring in North Carolina, and it was making it hard for the budget to be balanced from year to year. The current cost of Medicaid in North Carolina is just a little over $13.5 billion. So there is a need to sort of somehow know what that cost is going to be year to year. But also, and I would applaud North Carolina for this, while they were looking at getting the costs under control, they also started looking at innovative healthcare options through it. And if you read this plan, it really moves toward a system that only serves people when they're sick and begins to serve people by trying to keep them well, which we all know is less expensive than waiting until someone gets really sick to treat them. The primary core business model of it is the use of prepaid health plans, and this has changed all through the legislation. At first, they were called Provider-led Entities, PLEs, and then we heard Accountable Care Organizations, ACOs. We had to try four or five acronyms before we could find one that we could live with. Now they're PHPs. But basically, what a PHP is, is an organization that provides managed care for an individual. And they get a per-member-per-month rate. So if I'm one of these organizations and I'm serving 10,000 Medicaid recipients, I'm going to get a certain amount per month for each recipient, and then I'm responsible to serve them regardless of what their medical needs are, which again drives me to be motivated to keep them healthy, because then I don't have to treat them in more expensive practices. There will be three statewide entities that'll probably be major corporations. My guess is outside vendors, like Cardinal Healthcare or Blue Cross Blue Shield. But there will be up to 10 regional PHPs, and these can be local organizations. Most likely, there'll be hospital systems that will expand their borders. And there is a legislation being introduced in the short session, I just read this this morning, that there may be 12 of those regional PHPs instead of 10. Some services are carved out. Dental services will not be on a per-member-per-month basis. Dental will be handled just like it is now. And also, our dual-eligible citizens, our elderly folks who receive Medicare and Medicaid will also stay on a fee-for-service. Finally, four years after implementation, each of these PHPs must practice what is called Whole-Person Care, which means Medicaid reform will take the behavioral health side of Medicaid, which is also very expensive, and combine it with the health side, and a person will be able to get all of their care from one entity. So we'll see a big change there. How it will impact Haywood County? In one way, Medicaid beneficiaries will be able to pick their own PHP, so you're not going to be forced into a provider that you don't care for. So you can choose from these three statewide plans, or you can choose your regional provider. We will continue to enroll citizens and determine eligibility for Medicaid coverage, so we will sort of be the gatekeepers for Medicaid. We will also continue to provide our core public health services, as the bill names local public health as an essential provider. So we'll be a big part of the Medicaid reform provision. And finally, local physicians and other Medicaid providers will be paid to serve enrolled patients on a capitated basis. So this will change how our local providers bill Medicaid. Next steps to implementation, North Carolina must apply for a waiver to implement this plan to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. The application is due to be submitted June 1, 2016, and I understand as early as this morning, the state is still very committed to getting that application in on time. If the waiver is approved, and the estimate is that it will be approved as early as January 2018, and all indications are that CMS likes the plan, it will be fully implemented 18 months later. So we see this as in a quick turnaround. We actually have a few years before this will be fully implemented, and that will be July 1, 2019, is the target date. Any questions?
Any questions, Stoney? Very good presentation.
Stoney, I hear you correctly, and I'm sure this is happening now, I know it is. There is a cap, you know, on what Medicare and Medicaid will pay. Somebody makes a doctor's visit, right? And the physicians know that. There's a cap on how much for each service.
Yeah. Well, like a lot of insurance companies, they will only pay up to a certain amount. We've probably all had that happen to us where, you know, I've had it happen like when I get my kid's wisdom teeth pulled out, and my insurance will only pay a certain amount. Medicaid is very similar, and doctors are very astute at knowing what that rate. But you're right, there is a cap. It's not just bill as much as you want to.
Which shrinks the number of physicians that actually will take the money now. That's, I guess, the negative.
It is true. Some physicians are not willing to bill Medicaid, and it's probably truer in dental care than it is with physicians.
All right. Thanks, Stoney.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move to a public comment session. Is anyone present who would care to address the board? If not, then we'll move to constituent concerns. Kevin?
I don't have any this one.
All right. Is there any adjustment to the agenda today? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the April 18, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? If not, then we'll move to Julie Davis with some revenue, I mean, some budget amendments. Julie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have quite a few budget amendments for you today, and I actually have combined some into one to make it a little shorter, and I'll go through them quickly, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of you might have. The first one is the special revenue funds for our special districts, the Fire District, the Road Service, and the Sanitation District. About this time of year, we realized that some of the tax revenue that we have collected that we send to them is coming in a little higher than we had originally estimated, so we are increasing the budget to cover those, so we can send those to those related districts. And the next one is public safety. This is a combined budget amendment. The Sheriff's Office noticed that they needed some funding for repair and maintenance of vehicles. They have some vehicles with a lot of mileage on them, and so they've asked if they could -- they actually asked for a little bit less than $30,000, but I rounded it up to $30,000 to give them enough to get through the end of the year on their vehicle repair and maintenance. In addition to that, the EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, was going over budget on their overtime and temp, part-time wages, and I think that's related to new staffing and training. While new people train, they have to cover those shifts. So the total of this is $65,000, and I'm taking from contingency in the general fund.
Any questions there?
All right, the next one is Health and Human Services Agency. This is for -- to purchase an electronic records system for the general health clinic, and actually, it's going to cover multiple departments in the Health Department, and this is Medicaid funding that has already been received, that we have in an escrow-type fund that will be moving into the revenue fund to cover this. It's $49,983. And the next one also is Health and Human Services. This is actually a reduction. There are two grants that have been reduced, and I am just reflecting that in the budget so those expense line items won't be overspent. The total of the reduction is $2,830 for those two programs. And then I have another Health and Human Services Agency. This actually is a combination of two environmental health programs. The first one is actually for the food and lodging program, and this is additional revenue, $11,768 that was received for meeting certain benchmarks in the Environmental Health Services Program. And there's a $2,942 Zika virus prevention grant that I put in here because it's environmental And the last one that I have here, and I know I'm going quickly, this is a debt service change. We had a couple of changes in debt service this year. You might remember the public services training facility at the community college came in about double what we had expected, so I had to increase the amount of debt service that we were paying for this year for that particular facility. However, by doing the refunding that we had done this year, there was a reduction. So we netted that increase of over $100,000 with a reduction of about $100,000 in the refunding. We are only about $20,000 out, but I do need to show that $20,000 in debt service budget so that I can pay those debt service payments.
And that's from the quarterly sales tax revenue?
Yes, yes, the community colleges. All sales tax revenue, and there's enough money to fund that and some other things, too. So we're good on that score.
Okay. Any questions of Julie? Guess we'll see a lot more of this cleanup stuff in the coming meetings, won't we?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll move to the third item of the consent agenda, which is a proclamation for National Nurses Week, which is May 6 through 12, 2016. Recognize Marty Stamey, Senior Operations Director, Haywood Regional Medical Center.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Mr. Stamey.
Morning.
Morning.
And Commissioners, it's great to be back. It's an honor to be here with a group of nursing leaders from the hospital. Also, we'd like to recognize Neil Buddy, a board member from the hospital, and Mark Klasby's here also. What we'd like to do is to have Ina McKiski, our interim CNO, Chief Nursing Officer, she's going to come up here in a second and introduce the group of nurses and have you read the proclamation so we can recognize them. Also, next Thursday on May 12, we're having a hospital picnic, and we're actually having all of our retirees would like to invite you to come out from 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock if you have time.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be cooking, so don't be afraid. I did it last year, it worked out great. But we'd really like for you to come out if you have time, have barbecue, hot dogs, and so forth. So it's a great time for everyone to get together, so if you have time, please come out and join us.
You're cooking so the ER will be fully staffed?
Yes, it will be fully staffed. Actually, I do it the night before for night shift, and we do it the next morning for everyone else, so. But we do greatly appreciate your support for the hospital. You know, it's -- each one of us, at some point in our life, are touched by the care of nurses, and, you know, I started working out there when I was 15 years old, and I tell everyone I was raised by nurses, and I truly was. You know, I mean, that's who pretty much raised me most of my life, so that's why it's great to be back out there at the hospital. So I'm going to ask Ina to come up here, and we'll ask the group to stand up. Ina, come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Board of Commissioners and community members. I'm honored to be here today in recognition of upcoming Nurses Week. I have a great team of nursing leaders and our board members over here. Please stand up. I'm going to quickly introduce members of the team that is with me, if you allow me. Carol Schroeder, and I'm going to tell you what departments of the hospital they work in, from quality. Jen Henson, PACU, Nancy White, Hospice, Darlene Haley, Home Care, Blake Rogers, Education, Adrian Crawford, Emergency Department, Sheila Gordon, Quality, Courtney Finesse, Intensive Care Unit, Susan Wayne, Women's Care, Tanya Chitwood, Women's Care, Beverly Pennebacher, Med Search, Beth White, Med Search, Lisa Brennan, Wound Care, Elizabeth Starland, Behavioral Health Unit. I'm glad that we're here today. The Hospital Haywood Medical Center, in different shapes and forms, has been in the community for close to 100 years now, and we want to tell you that we're pledging to support mission and vision of Duke Life Point, making community healthier, and make this place the best place to work for people of the community, the best place for doctors to practice medical care, and the best place for people to come and receive care. Thank you so much for having us here.
Okay, thank you. I can speak personally as to the value of nurses in my personal life as well as for the community, and so we certainly do appreciate it. I know that there's a proclamation, and I would ask Commissioner Kirkpatrick if he could read that for us.
Yeah, I'll be happy to, and as most of you know, I've been involved in the hospital not as much this past year, thankfully, actually, as opposed to the six years before that, and have been in many meetings involving quality, and also have been told about the experiences of others as well as my own and family members at the hospital. And I can tell you that having good quality nurses is necessary, and you hear that from the doctors and from the hospital administration. And the nurses actually set the tone for everyone's experience. That's the doctor's experience, the patient's experience as well. And without good nurses, you just don't get the good quality care and the experience that I think is necessary. And I appreciate the time and attention that each of you pay, because in some of us, you know, when you go out there and you're either the patient or your family's there, the nurse comes into that room, and that's that particular -- you think that's the only job she's got, and the fact of the matter is, is there's five or six, at least, if not more, other patients and other families that they're having to attend to and make reports on and do all this stuff accurately, and so what you do is respected.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll read this proclamation. "National Nurses Week proclamation. Whereas the nearly 3.4 million registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas the depth and breadth of the nursing profession meet the different and emergent healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, and whereas the American Nurses Association, as the voice for nurses of this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing delivery of primary and preventive healthcare, and whereas a renewed emphasis on primary and preventive healthcare will require better utilization of all of our nation's nursing resources, and whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients, and whereas the demand for nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the American population, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services, and whereas more qualified nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community, and whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by nurses will be an increasingly important component of the U.S. healthcare delivery system in the future. And whereas, along with the American Nurses Association, Haywood Regional Medical Center has declared the week of May 6 through 12, 2016, as National Nurses Week, with the theme "Culture of Safety: It Starts With You" in celebration of the ways in which nurses strive to provide safe and high-quality patient care and to map out the way to improve our healthcare system. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the residents of Haywood County celebrate nurses' accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show our appreciation for the nation's nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year."
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, the final item of the consent agenda is a request by the county manager to give authority to the county manager to make technical corrections to the personnel policy manual, providing they do not affect or create new policy. Ira?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you know, we have a pretty lengthy policy manual, and it's online, and from time to time, it's become apparent that just because in our minds that it was clear, it really -- certain passages may not have been a comma here or there, may have helped clarity, and we're not talking about things that would affect policy. And having this ability will allow me to go ahead and start working on some of those revisions. We plan on bringing any major policy revisions back to y'all on a schedule like we have in the past, but this will allow some of those things that we don't catch for clarity to be cleaned up without having to come back.
Includes if there was like a minor change in the law that had a technical correction, we could do that without having to have a --
For a board meeting and for a policy manual.
Right. Does anyone have any concerns about that, questions? Okay. Okay, Ira, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, we'll continue with the county manager under all business requesting approval of the emergency management ordinance. Ira?
Yes, the last time we were together, we had the public hearing on the emergency management ordinance. To my knowledge, there's been no more feedback since that public hearing, and you heard the one person speak at the public hearing, and he said that it was a good revision and glad that we had caught the thing about guns and then moved on to another topic. So this is the culmination of our work on the emergency management. A lot of credit goes out to Chip, and a lot of credit goes out to Greg Schuping and all the people that have to live the emergency management on this on a daily basis. I'd ask that you approve this.
And the North Carolina School of Government reviewed this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's been reviewed by a number of people.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, and hearing none would entertain a motion that the emergency management ordinance as presented be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And we'll continue with county manager for a request for reimbursement agreements ordinance.
Yes, the last time we were together, David Francis and Mark Klasby presented this for the public hearing. We had the public hearing, and no one spoke at it on reimbursement agreements. This will allow to reimburse contractors on infrastructure projects that are essential to promote the creation and attraction of new businesses.
Okay. Any questions here? Again, we had a public hearing on that matter, so if there's no further discussion, would entertain a motion that the reimbursement agreements ordinance as presented be approved.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Ira. Okay, next, we'll move to new business. We have Lori Tomlin with us for requesting approval of a timekeeping software upgrade.
Good morning. I'm here to request your approval to spend $73,050 of budgeted funds for our Cronos software upgrade, training, and annual maintenance and support. It's been about 10 years since we've installed and upgraded Cronos, so we're well overdue to perform this upgrade that will help support all our employees with their timekeeping and finance and HR. There's a lot of new features that we really would like to deploy, and we hope to have this completed in about six weeks.
Okay, and these are budgeted funds, as you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, are there any questions? Lori?
Lori, we have -- I have to upgrade software at the firm, and unfortunately, you know, it's just something you have to do, but could you explain maybe, in 10 years, that's a long time without upgrading software, but could you explain some of the probably issues that you've been running into because you haven't been able to upgrade and the need for this upgrade to just for the public?
First thing we need to do is increase our number of licensed users. A part of our software, we only have 350 users for some of the features, so we're going to bring that up to a 650-user base. But some of the things that it will allow is some automation, such as time-off requests that employees today, we do, we're very paper-intensive, and they'll submit a time-off request on paper to their supervisor, asking for vacation or an adjustment to their time. What this system does is it automatically gives the employees the ability to look at their time, to which they don't see today. They cannot view, most of them cannot view their time card that's managed by a supervisor. So with this automation, an employee can look at their time and send an email request to their supervisor to apply sick time or vacation. This will help save numerous hours This will help save numerous hours. We're projecting about 90 hours a week for all our timekeepers. We have to manually go through each of our employees, look at the paper, do the data entry for any time adjustments. And on this system, the employee can make their time adjustments. They sign off on it electronically that it's true and accurate. Then the supervisor just goes through and does a final approval electronically of their time. So that in itself is a huge time saving and cost savings for us. Some of the other things that it does is we'll have the ability to do some mobile timekeeping on smartphones or geo fencing if we wanted to, to say they can only clock in within this geographical location. But I think our biggest asset and the ability for the employees to manage and monitor their time that will automatically and electronically send notifications to their timekeeper or their supervisor. That in itself for large departments such as DSS or some of the sheriff's office where you have so many employees being reconciled by one person, it will, it will save us time, it will be more accurate. The employee again can see what they have in comp or personal and vacation and sick and not have to ask their supervisor what kind of time. We do have that on our time, on our paycheck, but to see it as you're applying that time in real time will be a cost savings.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not then, would entertain a motion to, that the timekeeping software upgrade described by Ms. Tomlin be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Lori. And next we have Michelle Haynes, the Business Services Director at HSA, and Stoney Blevins, the Director of HHSA with an amendment to the Southwestern Child Development Commission.
Good morning again. I, Michelle's not with us today. I needed her to cover me at another event.
All right. That's fine.
So we decided to go two ways. Commissioners, this is roughly an additional $291,884 added to the monies we approved in last year's budget, which was $3,080,000 for a grand total of $3,371,844. These are pass-through dollars for childcare subsidy. These are funds that we administer to low income parents who are working, that subsidizes their childcare bill, that allows them to work. We currently serve 742 children in this program and we're simply asking to be able to raise the amount. What happened is some counties don't use their allocation, so about this time of year, the counties like us who are spending all of their dollars are able to receive monies from other counties that are not.
Right. And to reiterate, this is simply pass-through dollars that we're accounting for.
It is pass-through dollars.
On the other end. Okay, any questions of Stoney? Okay, if not then, would entertain a motion that the contract for subsidized childcare program be increased as discussed by Stoney Blevins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, and we'll have a budget amendment, I suppose, to account for this, Julie?
We do have a budget amendment to account for this. And you'll notice that the budget amendment is for $500,000, which is more than the amount that Stoney had just mentioned to you. The contract sometimes needs to be renewed and sometimes we don't know till July that we have needed to spend a little bit more money for our June allocation. Last year, the amount came in at 3.45 million, so I've increased it up to three and a half million from the three million we had budgeted to cover anything that might happen through the end of June. Now, the contract is all we're going to pay. So if June comes and they need to increase the contract, they'll do that, but at least the budget will already be set.
Okay. Any questions, Julie? If not, would entertain a motion that the budget amendment as presented be approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, we'll move to David Francis, our Tax and Solid Waste Administrator with a resolution for the sale of the historic Haywood County Hospital. Welcome, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing pretty well today. The, before you have a resolution for the sale of the historic Haywood County Hospital out here at 1230 North Main Street, as you know, we started working on this last fall. We had a meeting in December, then we had another, two other presentations after that on January 8th, and then a affordable housing resolution that we did on March 7th. And then we held a public hearing on March 21st, just dedicated to the sale of the hospital for $200,000. So before you have a culmination of those meetings and everything that's taken place, and since that time, let me, I'd like to bring the board up to what has happened with this process as well, too. The National Historic Registry application is almost complete. It will be submitted in May because this project is also getting workforce tax credits and historic tax credits both. So Dale did a great job of getting the state historic tax credits underway back in 2010, but the Landmark developers are picking up the tab, which is $8,000 to pay for the national registry for the hospital. We received a perfect site score from the state of 60, along with other applications as well. And the, the state changed the formula during the middle of this process, had a little bit of a bump, a little bit of wave there. We got, kind of got spooked, but Landmark got busy and got the, their math to get where that, excuse me, what happened on the upper side of what the state did, they had to come back in and do some other work there to get back the site score that we had before. So that was a little bit, about two weeks there while they tried to get everything back in place. Due to that, what the state did, we had several developers dropped their projects out of the list for this past year. And the, once they got in there, they realized how much more remediation was going to have to be done. And almost 5% of the $7 million budget is dedicated to the remediation of the project there. So it's, so everything's still moving. We had folks here last week. We'll have some, this week, we have the contractors coming back to do another walkthrough and how the, the building's going to do the final layout as they submit. The application is due on May 10th. That's the reason we come before you now is seeking the final resolution, which will be included in the final application that is due May 10th. If you would like to go over the resolution or have the operatic voice of Chairman Kirkpatrick read again, that would be very fine with me.
We'd love to hear from you, David. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Whereas the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, the county, has sought to find an adaptive reuse of the historic Haywood County Hospital located at 1230 North Main Street, Wayneville, North Carolina, for affordable housing and to maintain the historic preservation of the hospital, which became the first county operated hospital in North Carolina in 1927. Whereas the county has signed an option to purchase real property for historic preservation with the Historic Preservation Foundation of North Carolina on the 8th of January 2016 to ensure this historic integrity of the building. And whereas, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution in support of and procedures and standards for affordable housing and the sale of properties to entities with extensive experience in developing or rehabilitating properties for persons of low or moderate income on March 7th, 2016. And whereas, as an advertised public hearing was held on Monday, March 21st, 2016, and the sale of the historic Haywood County Hospital to Landmark developers for $200,000 for public use for persons of low or moderate income was presented and discussed by the persons present from the general public. And now therefore it be it resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners shall sell and convey the fore-said property pursuant to the provisions of the North Carolina General Statutes 168-267 for a private sale for $200,000 to Landmark developers. Notice summarizing, the contents of this resolution shall be published once after its adoption and no sale shall be consummated thereunder until 10 days after its publication and the awarding of the housing tax credits by North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. The sale shall be subject to the following additional terms and conditions. A, additional preservation agreements to be negotiated and included in the deed. B, covenants or conditions contained in the deed to ensure that the property will be put to public use by the recipient entity to be developed or held by the entity for sale or lease to persons of low and moderate income. And C, commitment by the county to lend Landmark developers $450,000 at zero interest to be repaid in 30 years. Adopted this second day of May, 2016.
And thank you. Over the last few years, I think most people are aware, we've been unsuccessful in attracting developers that would, were interested in refurb, refurbing the hospital. And the primary reason was because the, their insufficient tax credits because of the site selection criteria by the North Carolina Housing Authority. It restricted distance to pharmacy, hospitals, and we were losing out by a half a mile in some cases. The county lobbied the North Carolina Housing Authority. I went down with Patsy Dowling from Mountain Projects and we lobbied the director to have a fair assessment criteria for the western part of the state. And in Charlotte, it's easy to be within a mile of a hospital or a pharmacy. It's not so easy necessarily in the western part of the state. So they, they agreed to change some of that criteria. And in so doing, the score, the site score, as you mentioned, turned out to be perfect because of the location of the facility.
And as you said, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, before it was penalized the rural communities the way that site selection was done at that point. And now it's more favorable. The Landmark developers are very enthusiastic, even with the, some of the bumps that we've had here lately. They think that with the combination and being in the western part of the state is a very, very strong indication that we may get this project completed and pushed through this time.
Yeah. Yeah, most of the tax credits were being eaten up, not picking on Mecklenburg County, but you could select a place in Mecklenburg that met all the criteria, buy a building, demolish it and build a new one, and you had 100% site scores.
Yeah.
We can't do that here.
So, and then one of the things that happened with the, the way that the formula and the math changed that what some of the people, like what you just said, you know, starting from scratch with that formula, it hurt those kind of readapted, for affordable housing, not readapted.
Right.
And it made readapted more, more attractive. So hopefully everything's just fallen in place and the stars are going to line up for us.
Okay, and let's hope it's successful. Any questions or comments?
I think it's a, it's a great project. It'll be viable for, for us and the town of Wayneville. And also, if you all recall, I guess it's been about three meetings ago, we had so many people here dealing with the, the affordable housing issue and hopefully that will help that as well. We don't, we won't have any issues with the 0% interest, will we, as far as, as far as the fact that if we're, if we're not charging any interest, I guess since we're a governmental entity, we can do that without interest being imputed as, as a gift to, to us. I mean, sometimes, you know, not necessarily is it correct to loan money without interest, otherwise the Internal Revenue Service or whomever considers that a gift, but I guess we're excluded from that.
We wouldn't be subject to that, but in addition to that, there's a specific statute that deals with this type of transaction for affordable housing.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure.
And there's several other transactions that Landmark and with these types have been modeled after the same represents, represents the way that we're doing it. Albemarle did this with their school, that they did that. So it's the same.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know, I've, I've worked on that building that year, so I am happy that a, a building that is quickly deteriorating, if you ride by it, you can see that, will be turned into a viable facility and really not an ISO, which is fastly becoming an ISO.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, you know, the use by the elderly veterans and low income is certainly good for our community.
It is. And the, we've been, Brandon Wilson, who used to, you know, be our Veterans Officer, is now number two in charge of the state. They're looking at this project as well, too. They may not be able to help what we were hoping on the front end with this project, but there's going to be certain things available to veterans that once this gets up and running, that veterans will have a special home here in Haywood County and that the folks in Raleigh are excited that, that we've included veterans in this project, you know, because a lot of this, you see affordable housing for seniors and families, but that not ones that have been designated for veterans as well, too. So the, the folks in Raleigh are excited about this project.
Often veterans affect all three categories.
Right, yes, yeah, very true, very true.
Exactly. Okay.
I want to make comment, too. I didn't, if anyone's concerned about the type of housing that'll be there, it's going to be very similar to the great laurels at Lake Junealuska, which is senior housing. So, and that's been a really good project for Lake Junealuska. It's near Lake Junealuska, kind of behind Bojangles, but it has been a good project for that.
Yes, it has, yeah.
It'll be similar, you know.
It will, it will be, yeah. The, you know, that, the, Lake Junealuska and the laurels and the, I forget the other entity that's involved, the folks over national, you know, they've done a great job of providing a place for seniors, you know, and it's an income qualification process, just like this would be as well, too. So it's, it's done a great service to our senior citizens there, so.
Okay. Anything else? If not, then would entertain a motion that the resolution for sale of the historic Haywood County Hospital to Landmark developers as read be approved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, David. All right, the fifth item of new business is requesting approval of the, of a transportation maintenance agreement for Mountain Projects for the Haywood Public Transit. Ira?
Yes, I'm requesting that the agreement for transportation maintenance with Mountain Projects, Haywood Public Transit, be approved. Haywood County, for about a decade, has done the maintenance and repair on the Mountain Projects vehicles, the Haywood Transit vehicles that you see around. And over time, the agreement they originally had, which was where we would do all the maintenance, has become less and less accurate. They've gone to a lot of new electronics on their buses, they have a new propane system on their buses. And so I talked with Patsy Dowling at Mountain Projects, and it's just time to update our agreement as to kind of what we're actually doing for them and have a, have a new agreement. So you'll notice that instead of having all the repair and maintenance that they would bring by, we're going to do their preventative maintenance, their brake repairs, their tire replacements, engine tune-ups, the minor, the stuff that we can, can do pretty easily with, with our present setup, but we're not going to be working on like their propane systems.
Right. Okay, any questions, Ira? As you mentioned, this has been longstanding program.
Yes, it's been a longstanding agreement.
Right. Okay, then if there's no questions or further discussion, would entertain a motion that the transportation maintenance agreement for Mountain Projects Incorporated involving Haywood Public Transit be approved? Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Item six of new business is requesting approval of a resolution opposing the Tennessee Valley Authority's environmental review process and alternate, alternative formulated to eliminate floating houses and non-navigable houseboats on Lake Fontana. Ira?
Yes, this is an issue that has caught some press in recent times and it's been passed to other counties where Lake Fontana is. Swain and Graham have had a significant impact, but it also impacts Haywood because it impacts the region. So I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution. I know that some of our citizens have commented and, to us and ask that we, we do something because they're, they're impacted. They may own a houseboat or they may work over, over there on the lake. So whereas TVA is a large federal land owner in western North Carolina, and whereas the TVA started an environmental process in April 2014 to study the impacts and concerns for safety, sanitation, water quality, and fair use of public lands and reservoirs in the TVA system. And whereas TVA formulated a recommendation that is proposed to be presented to the TVA Board of Directors on May 5th, 2016, that calls for removal of all floating houses and non-navigable houseboats within 20 years. And whereas upon approval of the policy by the TVA Board of Directors and following the public comment period, final rules will be published in the Federal Register. And whereas citizens and residents of Haywood County benefit economically from the use of houseboats on Lake Fontana. And whereas the proposed recommendation would negatively impact western North Carolina's recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas Swain County, North Carolina, has passed a resolution in opposition to the same, now therefore be it resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners opposes the alternative developed by the TVA and further resolves that the TVA Board of Directors eliminate this alternative from consideration.
Any comments or observations?
What's the background and why is the TVA doing this?
The background, as I understand it, is that you have, when they took over the Lake Fontana and expanded the lake, they grandfathered in a use of houseboats and non-navigable house... and non-navigable, uh, houseboats or, and floating houses on the lake. And so you're talking, that was back in the seventies. And over the time period, the TVA, uh, had some concerns initially about the, um, basically the septic systems on these houseboats. That was one of the initial concerns that they looked at. And they came up with a permitting process, and this is, I'm fast-forwarding through a few decades of history. Uh, they came up with a permitting process to look at that, and they brought, uh, a fee process, and we're supposed to be inspecting those. And as time goes on, um, they're claiming that they need to, uh, make sure and ensure the water quality, among other things. However, uh, most, the permitting process, there's not a lot of evidence that is out there, and I haven't examined extensively the evidence, uh, but that's one of the processes here, that there's no real evidence that the permitting process isn't working or couldn't work if it was enforced. But they are saying that they'd like to get rid of that and get the boats off of the water, that that's, uh, for the EPA or for the, uh, environmental standards, lake water quality.
I had to ask, I already put this on the agenda. We, the, the houseboats, a lot of people invest in them. They spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars, uh, is what I've heard. Uh, and TVA, they only permitted so many, so if you have that permit, you can, you're allowed a houseboat. So it's, I, to me, it's kind of a working man's recreational opportunity where he can go and, you know, have a, a home, kind of a home there on the lake. So, uh, and that's what people have been do- doing for decades, and then all of a sudden the TVA, all of a sudden, just decides they're going to do away with them in over a 20-year period. And I think this is stemming maybe a little bit from Tennessee. I don't think they're, in, in, at Fontana, uh, the TVA, they, they made, uh, well, North Carolina made them put septics on their houseboats, and then they have boats that go around and, and...
Check water quality.
Yeah, check water quality and, and take the septic out of the tanks. Uh, I don't know how to, how to describe that, but anyway, so the lake is clean. It's, they're, they're kind of claiming it's an environmental issue, and it's not in North Carolina. Now, it might be in Tennessee, but it's not in North Carolina. And this group that's meeting this week is in Tennessee, that's going to decide, possibly decide this. So, um, I think, uh, the Smoky Mountain News was reporting that the Tennessee Valley, I mean, that the Tennessee Legislature was against it also. So, and then of course Graham County has passed an order, I mean, a, a resolution. And I just felt like we have a number of residents, I know at least a half a dozen, and probably if I sit down and talk to people, I'd know more, that have houseboats over there that use them, uh, as a, as a recreational opportunity. And I think maybe some of the people that are offshore, maybe have homes, they don't like looking at those, too. I, I, I just wonder that out loud, but, um, but I think it's a, it's, it's a good, you know, it's a good recreational opportunity for us. We have several marina owners that live in Haywood County. I know Tony Sherrill, and I believe Dale told me that the Princes, uh, have a, a boat dock over there. So there are several people in, in, in Haywood County, uh, and I just felt like that it would be good for us to maybe represent our citizens, because I know so many that own homes over, that home, houseboats over there that'll be affected by this. I know the marina owners, it'll almost put them out of business because that's a big part of their business is people come to their houseboats and they, they go to those marinas, launch their boats to drive out to their houseboat. So I, I just felt like we're, uh, while we don't, the lake doesn't touch Haywood County, we do have many residents who, who use that for, uh, you know, recreational opportunity over there, so I just felt like it was a good, good thing to do.
You know, if, if in fact there were environmental concerns, I could understand the, um, reluctance of TVA to continue the permitting, but North Carolina has a very robust, uh, permitting, uh, procedure and testing procedure, and there's no evidence that Lake Fontana has been, uh, adversely affected environmentally, uh, by this. Now, as Kevin pointed out, there may be lakes in Tennessee or Kentucky or elsewhere where there are problems that the TVA is trying to address, um, but they, you know, should address those problem lakes individually, in my view, instead of using, um, that perceived problem to adversely affect Fontana, so.
Do we know how many houseboats are over there?
No.
You know? Four hundred?
No, it's...
That's the total, that you can't have anymore, right? Somebody has to give up a permit in order for, like, if I wanted one, I'd have to buy it from, if somebody had a permit.
That's why they're so expensive. They don't, you know, we don't have so many.
Well, I know that lake's a lot cleaner. I mean, I used to, I can remember skiing in that lake when I was 16 and, and, and now, I'd have, I'd haven't gone back in a while, but it's, uh, it's a heck of a lot cleaner than it ever used to be. I mean, you know, you had to watch out what was going on when I was younger, and you were careful out there. And then there were times it was dirty and, I mean, and it's deep, so. Uh, and I think also, didn't they, they had to replace the bottom of those houseboats as well? I mean, they can't foam anymore, it has to be encapsulated and...
Right. Has to keep oils and fluids.
And I would say not just half a dozen, I'd say there's probably, probably a hundred, I bet you a hundred of those houseboats are people from Haywood County. If there's four hundred.
Oh, yeah, I, I know a half a dozen, so, I mean, just personally, and if I sit down and talk to people, probably know a lot more.
And if there are environmentals, there could be less restrictive alternatives, and that's really what this is about, if, look at less restrictive alternatives than a complete taking of the property.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Then I'll read for the almond boat dock is Haywood County folks.
I believe so.
Owners, I believe. Is that right? I believe it is, so. That's the biggest, biggest one there, I guess.
Okay. Okay, then if there's no further options, questions or, uh, discussion, we entertain a motion that the resolution opposing the TVA environmental review process and alternative formulated to eliminate floating houses and non-navigable houseboats on Lake Fontana be approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. And next we have, uh, with us Dale Burris, Facilities and Maintenance Director for Change Order Request.
Morning, questions? While you all know that I hate that term, change order, that's, that's something that I dislike very much, but this, what was found, and I just want to give you a, a real quick overview of what, uh, what it came up to be, is as the grading contractor was actually working towards the back, the rear end of the site, the, the back edge of the site nearest the sheriff's office, um, and the, the mobile trailer was moved, uh, that they, that the DOC used to use for a shop, and the old laundry was removed. Couple of days went by, and as we all know, we haven't had any rain, uh, actually probably a couple of weeks. So as it went by, I kept noticing the ground started seeping as they were running equipment over it. So I asked them, I said, uh, can we dig a couple of test pits, check elevation back here? So we actually checked elevation. We were good as far as the site went, but when we started actually pulling test pits and checking elevation for the bottom of the footing, we were starting to get into the water table. So I went back and pulled some pictures, and I found where we had actually worked on the Haywood Pathway Center, putting in the grease separator, and we were right at that same elevation. So of course the water table's pretty well going to stay the same. So what we did, and went back to the engineer and spoke to him, instead of looking at a, uh, changing the footings for portions of the building, was actually just raising elevation from elevation of nine ninety-nine to one thousand, as the set elevations per the site plan. So, um, I went back to, uh, John Bergen Construction, this was an honor requested change order, went back to John Bergen Construction and asked him to get this site grading contractor to, uh, come up with the cost. We were looking at about seven hundred plus or minus additional cubic yards to raise the elevation from nine ninety-nine to one thousand, and which will increase the budget of one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand to two million, four hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the change order request is for fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I feel that the seven hundred yards is, cubic yards is going to be plenty enough. There was seventy cubic yards in the original contract. That's, that's basically seven truckloads. We're looking at, you know, um, ten times more than that. So we're looking at about a cost of twenty dollars and thirty-six cents per cubic yard placed and compacted to, to raise the elevation, to get our building and not have to deal with footing, uh, with the water table for the footings.
And this comes out of project contingency?
That, yes, sir, that's correct.
And how much was the contingency, Dale, for this project?
I think, uh, Mr. Davis says it, but it was ninety-seven?
Ninety-five thousand five hundred contingency.
I was close.
Okay, so we're, we're in good shape there, then?
I, I feel that we're in good shape. We do have, uh, one other thing, if you don't mind me mentioning, our special inspections. It's not on this agenda, but I will be coming back with that once I get the cost. I just wanted to make you aware that the special inspection's required in the 2012 code for certain buildings. We do have to have a third party that's by the owner, that's pointing to me, by the owner, Haywood County, that has to be conducted.
Okay. All right, any questions, Dale? If not, then, uh, we entertain a motion that change order number one, as presented, be approved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, sir.
And the last item of new business will be a capital project fund budget amendment to pay for Dale's extra dirt.
And this is coming from the contingency in the project, and it brings the contingency from ninety-five-five down to eighty-one thousand, two fifty by appropriating the fourteen thousand, two fifty.
Okay. There's no questions, then? We entertain a motion that the budget amendment, as presented, be approved.
Absolutely.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Julie. Okay, uh, that concludes our agenda. Um, at this point, we entertain a motion that we enter into closed session for purposes of attorney-client privilege under authority of General Statute 143, 318.11A3.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you. Here we have returned from closed session. Is there additional business for the board? If not, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.